That didn't kill anybody.
Colleen Joyce put the art contest he's putting up right now in the cafeteria, so case you go by.
I know, that's always fun.
Hello.
They look pretty cool.
Hi Wendy, hi Vivek.
Just. Hi Wendy.
There we go.
Hi Bob, we almost have you. Hi Jackie.
It's an awfully quiet, serious group. I don't know.
Yeah, I was just thinking, looking at all the different color temperatures of the light that everybody is using. It's a, you need something nice and mellow, like, right? But Bob, you're muted. We need to get you unmuted.
I said, did you get one of those halo lights that's supposed to make you look better?
Yes.
I figured, oh, it's not gonna help, but it doesn't matter.
You need one of those tanning lights.
Yeah, yeah, I need something.
Something. Vivek's going to do media.
Oh, yeah. I couldn't get my headset to work. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Waiting for Phil to call in.
Has everyone been COVID safe, I hope?
I'm the crazy out there.
Yeah, great, yes. I just found out this morning, had it, but it was extremely mild, a little bit of a sore throat and a headache and they're, you know, quarantining for five days, but nothing really to write home about at all.
Right.
That's good.
Yeah, hopefully that's what we'll end up, you know, glorified cold, right?
Right.
It's funny, I dismantled like my home office and every time I have one of these meetings, I scramble to get a screen and put everything up. It's like nuts.
Yeah.
Were any of the commissioners able to get on the meeting today? I wasn't home.
I was there. You want to discuss it?
You went to it, yeah.
Virtually.
Does anyone want to ping Phil? Eric, are you chasing him down?
Yeah, I'm chasing him down.
What do we, what do we need for a quorum? I think three out of the five, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's wait a little bit longer, I guess, try to get Phil or.
Is Dave not attending? Oh, yeah, yep, yep, that's right. He's gonna be thirty minutes late, that's right. He'll be on after we start.
Yeah, I haven't heard about Phil, so.
Well, we can start. I just don't know who would be the secretary. Anybody want to be the secretary?
Sure, I'll volunteer to be secretary.
Okay, so Phil gets here. Okay, see, we got a quorum, we'll get going, so we.
Recording in progress.
All right, let me get down to my script here. This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being held remotely on Zoom and screened live on RCTV and YouTube. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items of the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or spawning the comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Commissioner Stempak will fill in for Commissioner Massino as the Board Secretary. And we please ask all remote participants to identify themselves.
Marlena Vita, Commissioner.
John Stempak, Commissioner.
Paul Colter, Commissioner. Okay. All right.
Could I make just a comment? On the screen, I have both Vivek, I've got your, your video with you muted. I've also got Vivek's iPhone, so you probably need one of those, I think.
I just, I'm using dual systems to avoid any bandwidth problems, so.
Ah, okay, yeah, thank you.
Right, I've had a few glitches, so I said, this is one way of making sure.
Yeah, just, just curious, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, this is not a, yeah.
Okay, we'll move right into the public comment. Vivek, if we could have your comment from the Citizens Advisory Board, please.
Yeah, so normally the cab meets before the Board of Commissioners, but our meeting is tomorrow. So I guess the only thing, so we really don't have anything that we would be putting up that would be coming to you right now. But the last thing that I know was from the December meeting, there was a discussion of the decarbonization strategy and that was a motion that was presented to the Board, and I know that was discussed at the Board, that that would be the only point.
Okay. All right, moving on to liaisons to the RMLD Board. Thing, thing, thing done.
Hi, Jackie McCarthy, Finance Committee Liaison to the RMLD Board, nothing to report here. Thanks.
I apologize, Jackie. I jumped over you. I'm sorry about that, my bad. And then moving on to the third bullet, public comment. Seeing zero public. We'll move on. How about the next motion, approval of the Board Minutes? Action item, John, if you want to read it, replace Phil.
Oh, let me bring it up.
I can, I can do it if you want.
Yeah, would you? Okay.
Okay, the suggested motion, move that the Board of Commissioners approve the meeting minutes of the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one meeting on the recommendation of the General Manager. All those, any discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye, John Stempak, aye.
Marlena Vita, aye.
Paul Colter, aye. Motion passes. All right, moving on to item number four on the agenda. Right, I gotta move my mouse around a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, I'm now in the meeting.
Hi Phil, welcome.
Would you, would you like to be?
My internet's not working properly. It kind of died this afternoon, so I don't want to, I'm gonna find out if somebody didn't pay the bill, you know?
I would, I would like to ask that Phil now be the Secretary for the meeting.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I would have come in on time, but I got a client who called just at the same time, so.
Everything's fine, yes, thank you, Phil.
Phil, just, we're on item number four of, of the agenda.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, item number four, the General Manager's Report. All right, suggested motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Phil.
Move that, move that the Board of Commissioners vote to include five eighty Main Street in the Adopton Island Town Reading Program and add into the existing five fifty Ash Street for vegetation beautification utilizing below the line funds.
Any discussion?
Just out of curiosity, what does that cost for, say, a year? Just.
Probably a couple of thousand dollars I could get. I mean, the vegetation that's at the end of Ash Street is, is pretty mature, so it's more of just trimming. The five eighty Main Street where we're installing the EV charging station, we'll restore that surface, working with the Garden Club. I've gotten approval from them. We had a meeting this morning with the DRT to discuss the vegetation. Clearly, we want things that are not gonna impact the electrical system or rose bushes or things with thorns that, that are not gonna allow people to access. There was a lot of discussion this morning about the signage. We're getting, Greg and I are working on an operating procedure that we'll be sending to the town that will show the signage for the charging station. To answer your question specifically about the vegetation for that entire island which goes from the corner of Maiden Haven all the way down to the end of the parking lot, we'll have to get some pricing on that for the original restoration as part of the EV charging station, and then I'll be in a better position to give you like an annual maintenance cost.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Let me ask Paul and I'll send you an email tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. So the town is, everyone's agreed, Mary Higgins was great to work with. They're all excited about it and we're excited about making another island beautiful in the town. We'll work with them on the signs and the construction bid is due sometime, I think, next week and we'll probably start construction in the spring soon as the ground thaws. So, and the town also agreed to a site selection committee, which is Erin Schaefer and Ryan Percival, so that we can continue to select sites that are feasible, both civilly, electrically, and also in accordance with the town's planning.
Any further discussion? Do we, in the, in the great movie, Monty Python and the Holy Grail, do we get a shrubbery, right? It's a bad joke. But, um. All those in favor?
Marlena Vita, aye.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
Mr. Massino, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. All right, that passes. Thank you.
Sorry, please second that.
I don't, I'll second it.
I apologize. Thank you, Erica.
Okay, the mini board trainings that we talked about at the last couple of meetings, we're looking to schedule the FERC training, maybe in February or March, where Wendy was gonna go over basic FERC accounting. There's some legal training that's coming in accordance with our policies, so I'll let you know what those are. Probably some of the policies that are coming out in this meeting as well as next meeting, we're gonna get back to those now that we're a little bit past a lot of focus on the climate law. We'll get back to the policy updates. The, there's gonna be also be open meeting law training coming up as well to include all of the Board in. You know, we try to do that every time there's more new members, so we're trying to plan that as well. We're looking for two meetings in February that we can talk about a little later when we're doing the scheduling. One would be Thursday, February twenty-fourth for the regular meeting, but then a separate meeting to go over GM goals. We usually do that as a separate meeting, but to try to combine that with the cultural company that we're hiring, right now that contract is, is in procurement and we're hoping to have that set up for, maybe try to coordinate that for the same day. That would be, make the most sense to have that combined. So Erica will send out a doodle on that one. Any questions on that? Joint Meeting on Economic Development with the Select Board, so tomorrow morning at right and early at seven thirty, we're gonna do a sunshine tour, which is now gonna be full of snow and slush. We're meeting in the lobby. Erica did a great job on the tour map and some highlighted information about the lots and the structures to try to give the town new commissioners and also select board members and folks that work in the town on the planning a better idea of what our operations looks like so that we can use that visual as part of a joint meeting with the Select Board in February, more of March, to discuss economic development of the entire Ash Street area. So the town on their website under Economic Development, I'm sure you've seen some of their visions they've had in the past. You can take a look at those. But I think we need to move forward with what is more possible that could happen so that I can get back to a master site plan, which we kind of put on hold for a few years about fixing these building ups and taking care of some maintenance issues. Some events, oh, in the March, Jackie, this one's for you. We were requested to do a pilot update to the Finance Committee in March, so maybe I'll reach out to you, Erica, to try to set up that meeting so that we can provide you with an update now that we've changed to the new calculation.
Sure.
Okay, in events, we have Electric Vehicle Charging Strategies webinar on February first. There's a link on the website of how to register. I know the Commissioner Talbot has volunteered to be on that panel, so that's really great. The purpose is to provide education on electric vehicles and the RMLD rebates to promote electrification. There was a press release that went out last week and will be promoted in upcoming newsletter and additional email blasts. We'll also give a Reading Rotary Update on January twenty-fourth. What's coming up is high school art contest. I know we love that because we get to select one for the cover of our annual report. That'll get kicked off at the end of January. The art theme, as I mentioned in prior meetings, is versatility is what we used. Prior year was resiliency, this past year was versatility. The Elementary Art Contest Awards is February and March. We have to determine that. The pictures are just coming in, so we'll be hanging those in the cafeteria. I guess we can talk a little bit more about coming in to do the voting, mask mandates, but I think people could probably come in and take a look for voting. We did install some AV hybrid technology in order to do hybrid meetings in one of our conference rooms. It works really, really great. And the key is that we won't have them cyber issues with it. If people come in with their laptops or they want to do a presentation, we now have a technology and a design that, that secures the isolation and prevents any cyber attacks. So we're very excited about that. That type of system is going into the large AV room, where hopefully we'll meet back in the spring. We have brand new carpet going in there, so it'll look a little bit nicer. I know there was some tripping hazards before. With the new technology, I think that would be great for the spring, so let's keep our fingers crossed for that. Item eight, Paula O'Leary is our Chief Procurement Officer. She was asked to come in and go over some procurement highlights, which I mentioned at our last meeting, so she's gonna do a presentation, just short, number eight. I did submit the warrant article for the potential procurement of the land for the Wilmington substation. You were all copied on that. I didn't know if there was any questions. But as we, as the town gets closer to issuing those, I'll make sure that it's finalized, but you can expect that to be on the warrant for the upcoming town meeting. And I think that is all I have on the Manager's Report. Thank you.
If I could just make a quick comment, I, I thought the layout of the maps for the walk around tomorrow were done very, very well. And I'd like to commend Erica for doing that. That was really a very nice way of kind of laying out the entire mapping and what, you know, the history of it and everything else. It was a very pleasant to kind of walk through that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Erica. Good job.
Okay, hearing no more discussion. We'll move on to Policy Review.
Okay, so I'll try to go these, through these fairly quickly. Again, as I stated, we're gonna start getting back into trying to put several policies on every board meeting. So this, this month, we have one, five, seventeen, and twenty-two. If you would like Chair Colter, I can kind of go through, or if you want to, you want to state the motions first and then I'll kind of go through the highlight of the changes.
Why don't you go through it and then, and then at the end, we'll, we'll do it.
Okay, Erica, I'm gonna go through all of them, so I don't know if you want to put them up or I'm just gonna. So Policy One is.
Why don't we start with the motion? Why don't we start with the motion first? I think, Mr. Chair, we better, better that way.
All right.
I'll make the first, Policy One.
Okay.
Move that the Board of Commissioners approve Policy One, Community Relations as presented, with no change on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second, Mr. Stempak?
I thought we were gonna go over it.
There's no changes on this one, so it'll just have the next.
Then what you do is ask for a discussion though, right?
Well, I was gonna ask for discussion, yeah, wait a second. Yeah, the only, the only, the only question that I had on, on that particular one, I know there was a thing about donations. Do we ever make, does RMLD ever make donations?
Um.
To communities?
Not donations per se, but the law is pretty specific and we're, we always have new, what, what I would describe as new opportunities that we have to make sure. So for example, the, the fund for fuel, we don't, we, we accept money as a sponsor, but we don't match it, so there's no contributions there. So we go through different things and no, there's, there's no donations to any charities or any 501Cs. But everybody wants to reach out and try to do good things and we just want to make sure that while it sounds really good and we all want to help, we have to stick to the line, so we do not, but we do get a lot of requests and we have to review each one of them.
Right, because I, the only, only question I, that I had, as a poll setting company, you know, I know times, a lot of times, communities will ask you to set polls around a park for lighting or, or something like that. And I didn't know that, how that would fall in under, you know, what do we, what do we call that as an organization, or has that ever been done by the RMLD?
It hasn't been done since I've been here. That's not something I'm familiar with.
Would that be precluded, you know, say someone, you know, you know, there's a ball field in Wilmington, they said, hey, you know, can you help us out, replace this light? Would that be something we would?
Well, we've had, we've replaced poles that are in parks, but they're owned by us. So generally what happens is if we're bringing electric service into a park, then generally we, we're setting the pole and we own the pole or the park is renting the pole.
So, Colleen, I think that would be, I think you're suggesting that'd be something that the, the town, let's say the town of Wilmington would want to put in place, right? And so that would perhaps fall under the town's electric use? Would that be appropriate to say?
I mean, if someone wanted to install poles to put lights on, say, a ball field.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, comes under the town's responsibility unless we're running electric service in there and then we would install the poles or rent the poles and provide the electric service as part of providing electric service. But we wouldn't donate poles or anything like that.
That's, that's the only questions that I have. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's because of the status of ourselves as a muni as opposed to National Grid or EverSource who are publicly traded companies and basically they can kind of do whatever they want. Is that the, why that's the case?
Oh, they don't do it either anymore. We used to.
Okay.
I got shut off. No, I just, I thought you'd have a little bit more freedom as a muni, quite honestly, to do, to do things like that, you know. Not, I just, I was more interested to see if it's been asked, and specifically for, like youth organizations, the company of like, hey, you know, I need a light, not that they, they pay for the light, it's sometimes the pole, like, oh, can you help us out with the pole, because they take the equipment in or whatever, so.
No, we don't even, and I remember a long time ago that, not here, but you know, people would say, can we take used poles and use them for ski mobile or whatever, and there's a hazardous issues with that, and so that's not even done anymore either.
Right. Okay. I have no further comments, so. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Marlena Vita, aye.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
Mr. Massino, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. Okay, on to the next motion, please, Phil.
Okay, move that the Board of Commissioners approve Policy Five, Overnight Travel is presented on the recommendation of General Manager.
Any discussion?
I'll second it.
Do you want a highlight, do you want a high level of the changes or do you want to just approve it based on the red lines?
You can give a quick highlight.
Okay, quick highlight. So we revised to reflect the current RMLD practice training, which is training in addition to overnight travel, so the form that's attached is now called travel slash training. So there's authorization for both. The organizational chart had various position titles that were changed. There was some updates and clarifications to the authority of the approval for the training and travel. The, there was clarification on the mileage. There was clarification on all receipts being required and a clarification on all allowable expenditures were clarified.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, Marlena Vita.
Vivek, aye.
Mr. Massino, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. Okay, Phil, we move on to the third item.
Move that the Board of Commissioners approve Policy Seventeen, Tuition Reimbursement as presented on the recommendation of General Manager.
Colleen, could you please give a?
Yes. So per the current organizational chart, Human Resources Manager was changed to a Director in a number of locations. We've determined that six courses per calendar year would be what we would look to for higher education. Semesters have changed a lot. They now have expedited classes that you can take that are six weeks or eight weeks, so the whole definition of you know, of a. of what you would call per semester doesn't really pertain anymore. So we're willing to reimburse up to six courses per year. Employees are required to submit all receipts. That was clarified. Recommendation, if the employee is enrolled in a private college or university, the reimbursement shall not exceed the tuition rates applicable to comparable programs at a Massachusetts public university or college. There's a lot of classes that are offered locally or in a mass public university or college that differs significantly from some private colleges. So we need to make that change. And employees are clarification of employees not being permitted to use RMLD time or resources for taking the classes or for studying. Those are essentially the updates to that policy.
I, I just had a quick question. Colleen, and that's, Mr. Chairman. The, the courses, I mean, do you sort of decide whether the courses are appropriate in terms of being applicable for the job training? Or, I mean, can, can anyone take any course that they wish to take?
Um, we have guidelines as far as what is appropriate for an engineering based company. Accounting, engineering, environmental sciences. We these courses can double for some of a career development path. But we want the employees to be able to attain skill proficiency. And a lot of times higher education is the right way, or they may want to be promoted and move into a different path. And most of the science spaces, we have sections for those. And they are listed as far as what is recommended. You know, you wouldn't, you know, if, if they wanted to get a bachelor's degree in history, that's not going to be authorized. But, but there's plenty of technical HR accounting, those type of things that we need in this company and we want our employees to grow. Did that answer the question, John?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Good. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, Marlena Bita.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Coulter, aye. All right. Phil, could we move on to the next item?
Move to the Board of Commissioners dissolve policy twenty-two pension trust presented on the recommendation of general manager.
Colleen, if you could.
Yes, policy twenty-two. So we discussed actually this policy previously and the town handles the pension trust in accordance with the statute under current law and RMLD has no authority. And we discussed that when we did policy eight for the OPEB. But the OPEB, in the OPEB, the RMLD does have authority. So that's why there's a policy for OPEB. And we're going to dissolve this policy under the pension trust. That's essentially the purpose of the dissolving.
And just when we moved everything, there's no remaining residual fund that's going to be left behind, like, you know, something crazy like a all, all funds were transferred. There's no OPEB fund that's left under Reading Light, right? Is, is that correct? When I, when I say that, you know, that sometimes when you transfer a 401K for whatever reason, there's two dollars left and someone could come back later on. Everything transferred cleanly. Is that, is that correct?
I'm sorry, are you talking about the pension trust or the OPEB trust?
Yeah, oh, well, the pension trust went to the OPEB trust, so.
Well, Wendy, are you on here? Do you want to?
Yes. No, no, there are two separate trusts. And right now they're moving the money. It's a transition period of moving it, certain bulks of money for this, for the funds that they're investing in. So that is happening right now.
Okay.
So it's, it, it is being moved. It could be mostly moved, but I understand what you're saying. And, you know, we'll report on that with, with the audit as well.
Okay.
So you'll see where that is.
Is it wise to dissolve the, the, this policy while you're still in motion? Did you wait? Because you have, do you have any authority if you dissolve the policy?
I'm not understanding the connection here. I'm sorry.
Wendy, he's, I think Chair Coulter is talking about the pension trust.
Yeah.
We still have the pension trust. It's just a custodian. And the OPEB trust is new. The custodian changed on that. But this still is in effect, just so you know.
So I, what I hear Chairman saying is that, you know, if, if until it's completely handed off to the town and everything is in place and there's no, you know, one dollar left in someone's 401K or whatever it may be, should we continue to have this and get rid of it at the appropriate time?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, John. No, it's, it is with the town. It is, it's, it's always been with the town.
Yeah.
But the, the, the trust is, what I'm saying by the trust is still in effect. The funds are, are, the funds are all together regardless, is my point.
If I can clarify, we are not handling the pension trust. That is the point of dissolving this. The pension trust still exists, but it's with the town. Okay, so the RMLD's annual payments to the town of Reading may be reflected in as an operating expense and its rates without the creation of a separate trust. So this governing document doesn't apply anymore. There's still a pension trust, but it comes under the authority of the town with the statutes.
Okay, I'm, I, I guess that's all. I was just curious, so that's why I asked the question. All right. Hearing no more, more questions. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Marlena Bita, aye.
Mr. Stempak, aye.
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Mr. Coulter, aye.
Albuta, I have just joined.
All right, hi, Dave.
Hello.
Phil, you're the accounting guy. You should have helped out there. Come on.
Excuse me, Dave, we gave you a shout out for being on the EV panel volunteering. Thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, happy to help. When is that?
February, hold on.
One?
First.
February first, at seven, seven PM.
We'll give you more details next week.
Okay.
Hey, moving on to item number six, integrated resource report. Mr. Fitz, if you could.
Very good. I'll share my screen. And you should be able to see the cover screen there. I'll make it fairly quick and simple. The intention tonight is just take a few minutes to update a couple of key relevant topics that we worked on last year together. And the three topics are basically the rates rollout, so a quick update on the rates rollout. And then we'll talk just a quick update in terms of some of the power supply stuff, just so you guys know what's going on. And then the last topic here will be a quick update on Hydro Quebec. All of these topics are informational. As we had mentioned at the end of last, the December twentieth meeting, we want to talk about batteries and present a motion to you. That'll be a February event. So tonight's just a quick update on the, the rates update, twenty twenty-two rates update. So the basic rates that we, that you guys approved last fall, they, the filing for the MDPU has been confirmed. The billing transition went very smoothly. Started January first. However, the PPCT and the fuel were a little bit higher than we expected for January relative to, well, they were really higher than we expected in general. But when we look at the bill relative to December, some customers are going to be instead of in the fight with the residential in particular, instead of being in the five percent increase, it'll be closer to ten, maybe eleven percent increase. Some of that's tied to different usage when you, when you compare them. The reality is when we set rates and bills, we look at it on an annual basis. So we haven't had very many calls yet, but we just, as we were processing the bills, we take a look at things before they go out, especially when we do a rate change. So we put some additional discussions on the website. We've equipped customer service with some additional talking points in case anybody asks why the rates look a little bit higher. The reality is it's, it's not, it's not significantly higher than we originally expected. But when you look at it relative to December, it's higher. One of the things that we had in place in December, well, actually we started in September, October, November and December. We had included in our PPCT fund some dollars from the rate stabilization funds. We did not put that in place in January. So anyways, don't expect a lot of feedback, but just in case somebody calls you, the reason is PPCT and fuel, which are both passed, passed through accounts. So that's basic rates. The renewable choice. So renewable choice, the residential portion of that will be effective as of February first. The commercial and industrial, we're still working through some details in terms of how that fits into the TOU rate on the commercial and industrial side. So the, we're expecting March first at the latest for the commercial and industrial. In fact, March first will probably be the right transition point for the March bills. But the renewable choice on the residential side is pretty smooth. The way we ended up having to do it in our billing system was to show an incremental rate as opposed to incremental usage, which was the original structure. The dollars end up being the same. So all of our communication packages, the DPU filing, et cetera, are, are going to reflect that it's an incremental rate. Should be fine. The communication stuff, again, we've talked about this before. We want to be very proactive on the communication. So there'll be the newsletter that goes out on Friday will, will include the renewable choice rate. We'll do a press release at the same time. The website will be updated at the same time. There'll be some email blast. And then as we get into the early March, we'll probably do notice on the invoice cloud, the e-bills. And then we'll also do something with our, for the paper ones. I mean, there's something on the outside of the envelope. We have some ability to do special messaging there, but so in March, we'll do a follow-up communication. We expect if everything goes as planned, that signups can start as early as next Monday in preparation for February. So that I think is going to roll out pretty smoothly. The A three rate, which was the EV rate we talked about that had the three tiers or the three sections. We've got, we're still working through some testing in terms of how that fits into our current billing system. In both cases, for both the A three rate and also in fact, we're going to put it in place for the renewable choice, but there will be a little calculator. So people can go in and put in some basic numbers and get an idea of what their, what the impact would be if they decide to do renewable choice. That'll be effective next week. And the case of A three rate as well. So we're trying to make more and more updates on the website as part of our primary communication vehicle. So that's a quick update on rates. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump to the next topic unless there are any quick questions. Okay. Power supply. So two main buckets of power supply stuff, the TFAs. We did three TFAs last year. They're primarily in the first half of the year. We tend to run the TFA analysis at least once a month, looking at forward price curves. It, it's just looking at the trend, et cetera, will probably execute some additional TFAs. And they go out over a four-year period, as you can see as an example here. Probably in the April, May timeframe is when we expect the numbers to be combination of, of where the price trends are going. Now, probably a good price time for us to execute either one or two, possibly three more FTAs in the, in the month of, in the year twenty twenty-two. So business as usual on that side. And then in terms of the contracts that were approved in twenty twenty-one, we had those three gravity contracts. The second item there and the, the first one, the Gravity Connecticut and the Gravity Doha. And one of the things that you guys had requested is that we completed environmental assessment, environmental justice. Those are complete on both the Connecticut and the Doha. Those both came back clean. We will likely queue up the Gravity Plant Number Four in New York this spring. In the case of the Doha plant, the PPA is fully signed. We're expecting to take power starting in realistically, probably April, just given some maintenance they're doing on it right now. The Broadleaf Solar, that fourth, fourth item down, PPA is fully executed. The Seabrook Solar, which we approved also last year. We expect to sign the PPA in February. The Vineyard Wind, the PPA will probably be in the March timeframe. We talked about that quite a bit on the last two sessions. And then the Seabrook Nuclear, which we, the Seabrook Nuclear is one of two pieces in terms of the nuclear piece that we presented back in December. We are, our goal is to split, as you remember, just to manage risk is to split between the existing three reactors that remain in New England, Seabrook being one. And then there's two reactors down in Connecticut at the Millstone facility. So the Millstone guys are still working on a proposal. We're, we're working back and forth, both as RMLD and also as a consortium with, with some other of the MLPs through E and E to see where we can get a, a better program. But that second part's going through. The key thing I wanted you guys just to kind of walk away with here is that these are all long-term contracts, you know, twenty-five, well, eighteen, the case of the of the nuclear, the Seabrook one, because we were going to start in twenty thirty-one. But each one of these are twenty to thirty years. And that's one of the benefit to our rate payers of being an MLP is we can do these longer term contracts. We can, we can get some better pricing because the, the generators have a, have an idea of what's coming down the road. So anyways, that's a, that's a quick update on, on power supply. In terms of the power supply stuff, as I mentioned, in February, we'll come back with some requests for approvals on some of the battery projects that we talked about, probably the first two of five that'll happen over the next four years. And between Hamed and I, we, we had identified the NO team and, and IRD team locations for each one of those. But we'll give you more details on that afterwards. Any questions on power supply before I jump to the last topic? Last topic, Hydro Quebec, again, this is information. Remember we talked about transmission being very important going forward for all of the region, not just RMLD. But we have been, as RMLD has been part of this consortium through E and E for the past twenty years, we were actually in earlier than that. In this particular case, we have both transmission rights and we also have equity rights, a small portion. This Hydro Quebec transmission line is an existing line that's already built. It's two thousand megawatts capacity. It goes from, from Canada. It actually goes back to a facility, a hydro facility in the northern part of Canada that is fairly stable in terms of output. So we have a small piece of it, which is good. The challenge for us, you know, the question would, would come, you know, we have transmission rights and we have equity ownership. Why aren't we taking power from it right now? Which is a good question. The reality is all of our little MLP consortium are less than one hundred megawatts. And we need to, the minimum, the minimum bid to participate is a hundred megawatts. So one of the things that we're working on with E and E, hopefully we can pull it off this year, but it might be twenty twenty-three, is actually to create some additional participation to allow us to actually start taking power through this. It's a win for us either way. Right now, the structure is we actually get dividend payments. We basically sell our rights and we get dividends from our equity portion. Our output, our, our expenses last year, just as an example, as bottom table, was just under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But the dividends paid out a little bit over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, five, 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 five. Net benefit is just over four hundred thousand dollars a year. So we're still ahead of the game. Very night, we didn't, the, the intention of this project was not as an investment vehicle. It was meant to have a, a transmission rights. And we're going to try and turn it into transmission rights. But as it sits right now and going forward, it's still be beneficial. There's a twenty, there's another twenty-year contract that we are committed to participate in. There's no exit clause to it in terms of the current one. But it is going to require about a little bit over, just about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars over the next four years, about fifty-seven thousand dollars a year for the next four years. But that's going to return nearly a million dollars in the following sixteen years. So it's still a win for us either way. So I just wanted to let you guys know because it's not a trivial little rounding error. I also wanted you to, to know that we're involved in this transmission as both a rights holder and an equity holder, which from a political perspective is good as well. We're putting our money where our mouth is in terms of, of pursuing not only non-carbon generation assets, but also transmission from, from Canada on the Hydro Quebec side. That's the, the quick summary for me. Any questions?
Great. Yes. Quick one for you. What would it take for us to break the hundred megawatt barrier? You know, we would become an investor then. You know, we would become an investor then.
Yeah. Commissioner, the the goal for us, so we would maintain our our small little equity portion. It's a it's a half of a percent. But we really want to get so that that's a benefit that pays dividends anyways. Where probably is, as we total everything up. We're probably right around ninety, ninety-two megawatts. So there's a small portion left. And I think the issue for us is not so much the capacity to fill it, but to gain. Other transmission rights to get us up to that hundred megawatts, because all the we have to have not only the the load or the requirements of a hundred megawatts, but we also have to have the rights. So we're trying to figure out who we can get some additional rights to. Again, another eight to ten megawatts. So hopefully, we can creatively pull that off so we can actually start taking power. It was not critical, it's not critical that we have it for the next couple of years, but as we go forward in time, we're going to want to have this power.
Yeah, a- a- absolutely. I mean, why, I mean. If if we went out, we made a purchase. To break that barrier, I would, it would obviously be five hundred thousand dollars. It it would absolutely be worth it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It it's not so much the the dollar issue isn't the challenge. The issue is finding somebody who's willing to give up their rights. And they say, sell their rights. You know, that that eight to ten megawatts of rights. So that's, we're 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 pursuing this. We're going to try and figure out a mechanism to do it, because it's going to be beneficial for it. So. I think we're all on the same page that we want to get into a transmission perspective, but in the meantime, it's it's more than self-funding.
Yeah.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
I'll.
Any further here? No further question. Move on to item number seven, the engineering and operations report. Hamed, if you could, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Let me just bring my slide up. Okay, you see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's start with the, well, first, thank you for the opportunity to present my report. It's been a while. So the first slide is showing the status of of reliability, basically. Across all the indices, S A D, K D and S A F I. As you could tell, year end December of twenty twenty-one, all the numbers are really low, much less than the regional and the national averages. The blue line shows the national averages and the green line shows the regional averages, meaning the northeast reliability. So across all the indices, everything is, we've got one of the most reliable systems in the northeast region. The next slide is showing you the causes, causes of the outages as of December twenty twenty-one, the year end. Excuse me. You see, the red is twenty twenty-one, basically, year-to-date. And also the blue bars, they indicate the annual averages from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty, a five-year average. The only thing that you know, you see, we're, we've done more, actually, we've had more outages, they've been on the equipment. As you could see, we had forty-five as opposed to five years average of thirty-six. And you're going to see in future slides, the reason for that and why the equipments, they, you know, they they have been failing again due to the. Aging of the infrastructures and, you know. And no, basically, maintenance for decades. This is the result of that that's catching up. However, we doing much better. We have it under control and you're going to see in future slides the plans that, you know, we have in order to do much better. And the rest of the categories, basically, we are, we are doing okay, we're less than the five years average, so we are heading in the right direction. So this slide is going to talk about the R M L D's maintenance program. The reason that our reliability is so great, it's because of all these programs that we have. Institute it. So I'm going to draw your highlight, the highlight of these is the two basically items, thirteen eight K V conversions. And also age transformer replacement program, which is annual program that we do. We replace so many of the transformers in this system in future slides. You're going to see. That you know what are the conditions and and what circumstances those transformers, they're going to be replaced. We actually exceeded the goals into those two areas. It was a overall, it was a very, very productive year for us. And, you know, we were able to convert lots of those four K V areas to thirteen eight, which means it's 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 actually upgrading the infrastructure. The wires, the poles and everything, which is, which is going to be, which is a key factor to the reliability. Also, the age transformer replacements, you're going to see in future slides that, you know, this year, we really, we had a record-breaking number of. Transformers, the age transformers that, you know, be replaced and we're proud of that. Thirteen eight K V conversion stepped down. This is very important to the reliability of the system. You've got lots of those four K V areas that, you know. We now converting, upgrading to thirteen eight, basically upgrading. It's not just upgrading the, you know, the poles, upgrading includes the wires, transformers, poles, all the accessories, basically redoing the entire area. Which means we've got to be good for another, you know, fifteen to twenty years, you know, if the system is maintained well. Now, these are the areas that basically you see that we completed, and this is again, that was the record-breaking. We got to got a chance to do lots of these areas, you know, large areas, like. The South Street is a large area, Central Street is a large area, Lower Street and Main Street in Lindfield. That was a big, huge project that was. Completed. We've got a small portion left to do that that got to be coordinated with the customers and the ground. Portion, which is going to be completed this year. What are the benefits of these programs? Really, it's going to basically help us to reduce the line losses, which is. You know, it's costing us money and the rate payers money. So the lower the losses, much better, you know, the system performance would be. And more efficiently the system runs, and that means that, you know, the reliability improved and the voltage, system voltage support is getting better and better. The other successful program was the C Y twenty twenty twenty-one underground subdivision upgrades. We got approximately about two hundred subdivisions into the system. Most of them, they're aged and, you know, they're due for upgrade. We have a system, we have. Basically prioritize them based on the age and the condition of the subdivision. And we go through the overall system, you know, overhaul as we go through, to to the transformer, age transformer replacement program. Which means we're replacing the transformers, primary and secondary cables, termination elbow. So everything is going to go, is going to be brand new as we go through these developments. Again, we did lots of those, as you could see, last year. Usually, we get to get a chance to do three or four, but last year, we got a lot done. You could see that, you know, we got like six. Again, the same benefits. It's going to improve the reliability, reducing the losses and improve the voltage in those old neighborhoods. This slide is talking about the age transformer replacement program. This program started back in two thousand fourteen. Since the inspection of the program that started in twenty twenty fourteen. In twenty twenty-one, we inspected almost seven hundred thirty-two Patmont transformers that they were over ten years in service in. Or age. The reason we we went to ten years and up because we had few premature failures of, you know, less than twenty-five years old. Because twenty-five years old, it basically is the markation that the manufacturers, you know, they recommend if the transformer is reaching. Twenty to twenty-five years of age, it's time to consider for upgrade and replacement. And, you know, we did this year hundred seventy-nine overhead and underground transformer. It was record-breaking. You know, we usually get a chance to replace maybe about hundred to hundred twenty, but this year we did hundred seventy-nine. Despite the pandemic challenges and the shortage of the staff. So we had a very productive year in doing the maintenance and the capital projects, and this is one of them that you know, one of the successful programs. So. What determines the transformer really that needs to be changed, even though we we have prioritized them based on the age. We still look at other factors like the condition and the load of the transformer. And those got the big portion, they set up a scorecard in order to determine which transformer, when it's going to have to be. Replaced. So it's it's a, there's some science that built into that. One of the reasons that transformers, they fail, it's because their oil degree of polarization starts, you know, deteriorating. And the demarcation for the distribution transformers is when that level falls below the two hundred, that means the transformer is now due for failure. Or it needs to be upgraded, replaced. Distribution transformers, they have the age, they're definitely approximately the age. Or survival age for that is between forty to fifty years. And that on the right, on the left, so the corner, left, lower corner. You could see that, you know, the life of the transformer exponentially decays as the years of operation is going up. And the years on the service or it's being, it's getting aged. So around for the, this this particular curve is for the substations, which you see that, you know, around two hundred. You're hitting the four, forty years markation. But for the distribution transformers, that number is around twenty-five years of the age, because it's a weaker transformer with respect to the substation transform. We got approximately approximately one thousand three hundred eight transformers. That they're over twenty-five years. The total transformers in system-wide, there are four thousand nine transformers. So we got these numbers transformers that, you know, continuously they're on the list for the upgrade. Again, based on the age and load and the physical con- conditions. We also changed our transform respect back in two thousand nineteen, that we no longer replacing their life, we no longer purchasing the life front transformers. And we replace them with the dead front type, which is much safer to work with. The new transformers are more of efficient and with the lower losses. So that's another benefit that we're getting by this from this program. This shows basically the each month by month by month, how many transformers was replaced in twenty twenty-one. As you could see, this chart over here on the right, the pie chart shows the number of transformers, the system-wide, that there are over twenty-five years of age. And the lighter color, lighter, light brown or pink, it shows that, you know, the the transformers that. Are transformers that are twenty-five years or older, I'm sorry, and that sixty-seven percent of the system are less than twenty-five years old. So the. Dark brown shows the number of transformers that less than twenty-five, and lighter one shows the number of transformers that they are over the twenty-five. So we got thirty-three percent of the system that the transformers, they need to be scheduled to upgrade. And that's how we approach for the replacement. The next one is the next successful program that we we got into, that was the miscellaneous. Construction like, you know, and it's one of the budget items for Patmont switchgear upgrades at industrial parks, the industrial parks. We approximately have about twenty-five switch gears into the system. They were antiquated. And as of January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, we had replaced seventeen switch gears have been replaced. Six units alone last year was replaced. Usually, we get a chance to replace three or four. Last year, again, we were able to. With the customers' cooperations to replace six units. And in twenty twenty-two, we have budget item to replace six more, which four are standard and twelve of them are special order for. Our transfer that it's in the Rivier Rivier Park in North Betty. So we also had completed few new projects, new developments. That these are the locations. I'm not going to read the one by one, but basically for system, for new development that we got a chance to complete. That's a lots of constructions. C Y twenty twenty-one smart grid automations, usually every year, we have these SCADA switches and interrupter switches that we replace four of those. Installed four of those and two of the interruptors. Last year, we installed five SCADA switches and three interruptors. Which these are smart grid switches that they have a capability, switches to join the intel team or fault detection, isolation, restoration. Which means when the fault passes through, the two switches, they can talk to each other and they can isolate the fault before it damages the equipment. So it saves money for us, less truck rollouts, you know, and it's a great savings overall for us and it's going to. Help us to restore the outage, non-outage area or non-faulted section feeders in matter of seconds rather than hours. Again, the benefit is improved reliability, faster restoration, it integrates with our outage management system. And also they provide metering data to the SCADA. One of the important metering data that we are interested and we're getting our as we're adding more and more E V charges and also more solar load is coming up. This is something that, you know, we are very concerned with. It's about harmonics. And this is what the industry basically, it's not, we are kind of behind it. Because it's not a problem yet, but we foresee the problem coming up, which is going to impact the power quality. And we are, as a proactive measure, so as we installing these switches, we using the capability of the switch, not only for. For the faster restoration during the outages, but also getting the telemetry data from these. Equipment so we can monitor the harmonics and the power factor that. And make sure that we deliver the quality of power to our customers. So a smart grid project, these are the ones that were completed in twenty twenty-one. We did a communication study because one of the key factors for these smart grid devices is communication. They've got to be able to talk to one another so they can isolate the fault fast. And restore the non-faulted section of the feeder. So this is completed. We're getting the reports pretty soon, so we know what type of radio and what kind of communication device. We better use in order to have robust communications. It's either fiber usually or the nine hundred megahertz radio. The A M I M D M study was completed, so now the the consultants, you know, completed and reported that. You know, we need to change our A M I system because it's aged and it's reached the end of the technology life. We also need to install a M D M, the mirror data management system, so we can house. All the mirror data for billing system integration with Coggsdale, as well as for for the demand-side management and demand response programs. That I R D would like to implement. The outage management and then I V R integration, I V R stands for interactive voice response. Meaning the media, they're going to send the last gasp message to the outage management system, and outage management system is going to identify the the customer meter number and the information from the. Customer information and it's going to send the message to the I V R to activate their response and getting back to the customer depending on. The method that the communication that they 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 choose to either phone, text or email. And then that way, you know, they can be notified. So so far, we have about eight hundred customers that they have signed up for this, but we need to, you know, probably launch another campaign and I encourage the customers, the. More customers to join this very exciting program. So it was successfully tested and now we can roll that out. The next one is the customer notification system. This is basically for customer alerts and notifications during the system peak and. Also for demand response programs. So we are getting into contract in order to to build the system or design the system. So that's in legal for the review and as soon as we have that completed, then we're going to get get started with that. And hopefully, this one is going to be done by end of this year. The volt-watt optimization, that's installed. It's in the testing mode right now. We, this is the one that, you know, it's going to improve the power quality. It's going to improve our power factor. As you know, as we have the higher power factor, meaning lower losses. And that's what we are focusing on. That would be great savings for our system. So that's another success, successful program. These are all modules of the SCADA system that, you know, again, being proactive and using the technology. And following the best business practices and to make sure that we deliver the best quality power to our customers. S and C smart grid training on these smart switches. Their training was completed, so all the staff, engineers and technical services and operations staff are fully trained on that. And they know what to expect about the safety procedures, about, you know, the construction, the best methods and and the communications and everything. So they. They have been trained across all all areas of. Construction and operations. In C Y twenty twenty-one, we tested, we did lots and lots of testing at the substation, substation three, four and five. Other cyclic testing for the transformers, break. Our cyclic testing for the transformers, breakers, relays and some of those devices is three years. Although a NERC is requiring five years, but we gain, we want to stay ahead of the game. We want to be more proactive than reactive, so we, even though we don't have to do it for five years. But since we have the equipment and the staff that, you know, they're very capable of conducting those tests, tests, so we we can, what we do, we we implement those testing and we test all the breakers, relays and transformers every three years. The transformers for station three and station four, they're due for two thousand twenty two. So this year, we're going to start testing these five transformers. And then the testing for these are going to be complete for the next three years, we don't have to worry about it. Now, with regards to the station five, this one, we we we're being more aggressive. We are testing everything annually because the substation is old. And, you know, until we build the new Wilmington substation, we just need to, you know, make sure that everything is in good working condition, which it is right now. We try just to know to ma- maintain that to the best we can until we build the new substation and transfer the load to the new substations. So so these are the accomplishments then, I wanted just to show you how much work was done in two thousand twenty one and the great accomplishments. The kudos goes to the operations staff that, you know, their cooperation, collaboration. They were able to get these done and focus, you know, on the maintenance and the reliability projects that, you know, they they were assigned to. In substations, we installed V LAN at the substations, this is security. And this is per NERC, you know, to make sure that nobody can, you know, can hack the system and disturb us, disturb the integrity of the system. And then their directory one relay upgrade at substation four. Again, this is the NERC mandated program that is requiring the national grid and ever source to upgrade the relays on one fifteen K V with the high speed relaying. And now that means now we're going to have to sync other relays with theirs. So we've gone as far as we can until, you know, they give us their plans. And again, we are ahead of curve on on that one, we're ready for them whenever whenever they do their study and tell us that, you know, what type of relaying they're going to be using, so we can sync other relays for protection with theirs. We ordered, this is another proactive measure that we took and it was completely done. We ordered the spare parts that, you know, take care for the substations. These are the long lead items and I'm glad we did this because some of these items for the substations. Now you're talking about two years, waiting two years and more for those. So we ordered all the parts that we need, just in case something breaks down, we don't have to the last minute jump through the hoops trying to find you know, to to find a part, so we we feel very comfortable with that. We repaired the tiebreaker at station five. This tiebreaker was tested, it was weak, so again, we didn't want to take the chances. We sent it out to Texas and they fixed it and it's on its way coming back this week. Engineering and operations, especially projects. We had lots and lots of NERC training and NERC physical and security, cybersecurity, SIP zero zero two and COM zero zero two. These are the programs that the NERC and N P C C they have instituted and they hold us accountable, they all, all the utilities accountable. We have a committee that including myself, I'm being the delegate, Colin is the manager, I'm being the delegate for the delegate manager to implement. And, you know, these are the members of the teams that we are all watching for all the updates. We are going to the website, NERC, N P C C, making sure we're not missing any of the, you know, new requirements. And we make sure that for every requirement that's coming new, the staff are trained. And, you know, we also trained everybody on the incident response plan. Because the within twenty eight, some of them, some of them within twelve to twenty four hours, we need to provide a report and send it to NERC for further follow up or you're going to end up getting a fine, so they've trained, their staff are fully trained to handle all the NERC and N P C C requirements. We finally, the next item, we finally negotiated successfully the contract, the five G contract with A T and T and Verizon and now that's in place, it's being implemented. We did a hosting capacity study for the solar generation, some of these studies being in house and some of the larger ones, it's being done outside, so it's mapped on the G I S, so we can track the solar installations and the impact that it would have on our feeders and it's being updated every six months. So right now we're due for another update that we should be getting that this month. We also set up the primary metering task task force as we tested all the primary meterings, system wide. And, you know, we are reviewing those one by one and some of those we are getting rid of. And some of the ones that they need to stay, we're going to update the P Ts and C Ts, the parts just to make sure that they're not causing any reliability problems and the metering is accurate. So as we go through this, we have approximately about seventy of those. We also, the next item, the S P C C plan was updated, that was still prevent prevention and coordination plan that, you know, it was updated this year, so we're up to date with the E P A regulations requirements. The V M P plan, vegetation management plan, it was sent to all the four towns, tree wardens and it's all signed and all approved by all of them, so we got that done. In facilities and purchasing and materials management, they were, they did a lot, lots of work, especially this last year. I don't know if you noticed or not, but the, you approved approximately forty bits and that's, that was the product of our materials management, Paula and her team, she did a wonderful job. Lots of lots of work and effort is going into these, it's not just, you know, the bit that, you know, you see and we're coming over here and we are asking you for the for the approval. Lots and lots of work goes behind it and these people, you know, they're doing a wonderful job on it. The stocks and ground maintenance, offshore remediation, we got a plan for that, we studied back in two thousand seventeen. And and also they made some recommendations, we're making a great progress on those that almost ninety percent done. There's some of that related, the the remaining stuff that they've done, it's for the station one that we got an exit strategy for that and, you know, yeah, and we've we, but we've done what what we could, what makes sense to do as far as the offshore remediation plan concerns. We installed the A C cooling system at station four. That helps to increase the thermal ratings of the feeders at the substation. So during the emergency conditions, we can pick up more load and switching between the feeders. So that was another successful project, substation three generator bit was awarded. And this is one of the items that, you know, it was supposed to be done last year and unfortunately the generator delivery kept being postponed, so they postponed, they delivered a generator three times. So now the latest day is September of this year, so September this year, we're going to change it, generate or upgrade. And this is my favorite, the new Wilmington substation. So these are all the tasks that it's going to have to go in order to build a new substation. As you all know, we have a location, a proposed location to purchase the land on Balladville area. So we've done the load allocation study, this was done on a mill soft, we have an engineering model that other engineers and myself, we did the study for the load transfer and what is the best scenario that, you know, it's going to give us the lowest losses on the system and the system could benefit the most. Because this says, this new substation is supposed to take the load of station five as well as providing the road relief for the other two substations, for the station three and station four. Once we build this substation, you're going to be good, you're going to be very, very strong as far as the sources are concerned, so I can't wait until they build the the substation. This is going to be my eighth substation throughout my career that I'm building and we are building and, you know, you're going through, so I'm very excited about it, it's a great project. So the survey, site survey was completed in twenty one, the environmental assistance was assessment was done in in twenty one. Also the land appraisal, we just got the appraisals, you know, for both of those. So the rest of these, you know, it's going to happen in from between twenty two to twenty six. So a- a- as you could see, this is a lengthy project, it takes time to build the substation and also transferring the load from other substations to the substation. Another very exciting project that we did in cooperation, collaboration with our I R D team, Greg and his team, which was really exciting and you know, we actually had to think about, you know, restrategizing about the loading strategy, transformer loading strategy. Our transformers are being loaded at eighty percent of the nameplate because and in anticipation of getting ready for more load, more E V, E V chargers. So we drop the loading requirement or loading capacity to the seventy percent of the nameplate of the transformer. And as we go on and more and more of these, they come in online, we're going to have to drop that, you know, the loading of the transformers maybe to sixty percent at some point, maybe fifty percent. Because these E V chargers, each one of them is equivalent like to three or four houses load. So when being fully charged. So we got a grant, as you know, we got a grant for seventy eight thousand dollars for L two, level two E V chargers at five locations, Wilmington, Town Hall and Library and Reading at the library and also the Haven Street, Main Street, also Linden Street. So at library, we also have a grant for the hopefully future, if you get the grants, ninety nine thousand dollars, I guess, grant for the level three chargers, if that's approved, which I believe it's going to be sometime in March, April. And then, you know, one of the L three chargers is going to go in the in the reading. So the project updates, the E V chargers, you know, we we were purchased and delivered. The construction R F P, the bid opening for that is next week. So the state contract deadline is July tenth and like what Colin mentioned, we're going to start the construction in April, May until so they're done. This is slide, their polls, I'm not going to go over that, but it shows as you could see, there are lots and lots of polls, especially in the Reading areas and also Wilmington areas. So you see, you might see some double poles, you know, that we are doing the best we can trying to transfer our wires, our assets from the old to the new, which is good as we go to through the area upgrades, I'm asking our our valued customers to be patient. We are doing the best we can to turn to transfer, transfer them as fast as we can. And then we we are asking Verizon and Comcast also to do the same. So all in all, it's good, there are lots of construction going on all four towns. And that's what's what's actually, what's what's contributing to the great reliability that we have. So that concludes my my report. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them if there are any. Thank you so much. You're on mute, Bob.
My turn?
Yeah, yeah, next. Thank you, thank you, Hameed, that was fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coulter, and I just want to say it's nice to meet those of you who I have not met previously. It's been a long time since I've been to a board meeting. I just wanted, I do want, I have two comments, just I just wanted to add a little bit more to what Hameed was saying relative to the length of time it's taking for for bids, I mean, for equipment and materials to be sent to us and the delays that we're facing. The supply chain has definitely been interrupted. Not only, you know, we have longer lead times, but also lead times is, Hameed uses as example, we were given an original lead time and those have been extended as far as the generator is concerned. I mean, we're all, I believe it was December, then it was April and now it's September. So that's a sample of exactly what's going on with the supply chain. Vendors are also not holding quite quote pricing longer than than some deadlines and they've shortened their deadlines on their quote pricing too. We've even heard that some vendors aren't even bothering to quote because it will take a year or more to get either the supplier or the equipment or the material. Some of the breaks and delays in the chain are due to shortage of personnel. As you know, lots of people have left their jobs and other people unfortunately have been out ill with the virus. So those are just some of the things that purchasing is facing too in this particular time that we're in. And on the forty bids from last year, I just wanted to let you know that already here it is January nineteenth and we've already assigned fifteen numbers to either bids quotes are it's quotes or proposals, so we haven't lost any pace in that regard. Now, some information on bidding that I know has come up in the past and although I don't have this particular one on on the screen, we have the age old question is, you know, why one bid? Well, let me tell you, this question has been asked many, many boards before you have asked the same question, believe me, okay? Some of the reasons, and I'm sure you've heard some of these too. Some of them, sometimes the vendors can't meet the specifications that that we put out there. Some I've got, some say they're too busy in that actually wouldn't be fair to R M L D to put in a bid if they're not going to be able to offer their services or equipment, okay? Some don't have the resources that we're looking for necessarily. And yes, sometimes, you know, bids are restrictive. I mean, our tree trimming bid is a good example of that in that we have very high safety qualifications in that bid. For instance, we require what's known as E H A P certification and that's an electrical hazard awareness program. And that's where employees who are trained, if they're going to work ten feet or closer to energized conductors. They're trained in the special hazards that could involve that type of work. And we'll say not all tree companies necessarily have that particular training. Prevailing wage, that that's on the slide, prevailing wages, many of you may know is under the Massachusetts general laws that any of our construction projects that are called public works, they require payment of prevailing wage, the division of labor standard sets that rate, that wage. And in order to comply with it, the vendor has to fill out a weekly certified payroll report and also a certified compliance statement that has to be submitted along with their invoices. It's, is it a lot more work? Yes, there's much more paperwork involved and filing. And again, you know, this is just a, you know, a guess on our part, but it's certainly a reason that some people don't like to fill out a lot of paperwork. You know, prevailing wages also, some people don't want to pay prevailing wages, you know, especially I'd say some of the smaller companies because, again, they they don't want to pay wages that might be that high. With every bid, we send out a, what we call a non, non response form. And I have to tell you, we get very little, very few people fill that out. Again, we send it out because we'd like to know, you know, what our bid looks like. Is it too restrictive, you know, what, you know, can you help us out for our future bids? But we very rarely get a response on that. Actually, I think we're going to try maybe rearranging where the form is within the bid to see if we can generate some more answers on that. That's one thing we'd like to try anyways. And also we have at the suggestion of the board now, all of our bids are going out for a minimum of three weeks where it's the minimum of a three week return for the submittal. If it's a particularly complicated bid, we'll even add more time to that, you know, we might go out for four weeks if it's particularly complicated. Depends on the projects. So those are some of the reasons that I can tell you that we've gotten either, you know, we, sometimes we will send out an email as to why people don't bid. And again, we get very low response, a lot of them don't respond. I leave messages to people, call them on the phone and ask them, you know, could you please just get back to us? We're just curious, you know, why didn't you bid? And they don't respond to my phone calls, you know. Yet on the other hand, I get a very friendly, oh, I'm sorry, you know, we're really too, you know, we're really too busy and we just couldn't do it. But, you know, we'd love you, we'd love to, you know, keep us on your vendor list and maybe the next time we'll be happy to put in a bid. Sometimes bids would have to be rejected and that, you know, of course knocks down the pool of vendors that you're dealing with too. Some of those reasons are the bids submittal may not meet the specifications. There might be, it might have been submitted after the date and time. It was non responsive, that means it didn't conform to all the terms and conditions set forth in the in the bid documents. Not responsible, that would be one that doesn't have the integrity or the capability or the reliability to do their work. We we would check references on that, that's how we would determine whether or not a vendor isn't responsible. We we would check references on that, that's how we would determine whether or not a vendor isn't responsible. Sometimes people don't put in all the forms that are required, particularly the statutory forms or even the forms that RMLD requires. As a local jurisdiction, we can put forms in the bid that are required above and beyond the statutory ones, which are the non collusion certification and the task compliance certification. For instance, in our electrician bid that went out and not that long ago, on our on-call electrician, we asked to have a master electrician's license to include their master electrician's license because you have to be a master electrician in order, or work under a master electrician in order to do so. The company often has the master electrician's license and one of the vendors did not include it, so as a result, that bid was rejected. Bid signed by an unauthorized person, again, within the bid forms, we have a portion where if you're an individual, then you you're the person signing that. If you're a partner, one of the partners signs. If you're an LLC, one of the members of the LLC must sign. And if it, if it's a corporation, then we require a certificate of vote that notes that the that the certain people, it can be one person, it can be more than one person, are allowed to sign the forms. And if an unauthorized person doesn't sign the form, then we reject the bid. We had an instance of that where I knew, this is back a few years ago, where I knew that the person signing as secretary was not the secretary. When I phoned him and said, I know you're not the secretary. And he said, oh, I I just signed it because I was in a hurry to get it in, you know. And that that was unfortunate because at that particular time I had to read, you know, the bid had to be rejected. Sometimes, let's see, exceptions. Some bidders will take exceptions to the bids and sometimes they are acceptable and sometimes they're not. That would depend on the department reviewing the specs to see whether or not an exception is acceptable. Sometimes there's too many exceptions and in that case, it's almost like you're changing the whole bid and the bid would very well be rejected in that instance. Or if the bids come in way over budget, RMLD always has the right to reject all bids if it's in the best interest of RMLD to do so and that wording is contained in all of our proposals, bids and quotes. Does anybody have any questions? I know those are some of the questions that have been discussed and always feel free, I mean, I'm open to questions, you can send questions into Colleen, she can always send them to me and we'd be happy and we very happily take your suggestions also. Thank you. Have questions, anyone?
No, thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you, Paula.
Okay.
I appreciate it. I can just let you know, I I feel your pain every day trying to get simple things like a fifty KVA mini pad. You you can't get them. We, National Grid can't get them. Every vendor that's out there can't can't get them and I, from what, they're saying it's steel now, they can't get the steel to make the mini pad. It's just, it's insanity, we're looking out like five months right now for mini pads, so it's just and and that's just, then it goes to a hundred, a hundred fifty, it's it's, and then bids for conduit in the ground are just out of control. So feel feel your pain, no response, huge prices, so.
Yes, yeah, the the price fluctuations have been been difficult too, you know, that everything, everything has gone up, everything.
It's crazy. Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to item number nine. Procurement request requiring board approval. All right, action item.
Ready for the motion, Mr. Chair?
Wait a minute.
Yes.
When is that?
This one, oh, that one was canceled.
That was canceled, right.
Yeah, sorry. Just want to make sure everyone knew that that one was postponed to the next, the next board meeting.
Okay, yep, no bidders.
Clear, I'm on camera again.
Oh, you are.
The check cleared.
Hi, Phil.
Okay, so we'll skip item ten and move right on to item eleven, suggested motion, Phil.
Move to the Board of Commissioners, go in executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one sixty four, Section forty seven D, exemption from public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances to discuss competitively sensitive issues regarding general laws. Should I say Mass General Laws? Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one, little A, the number one, and to consider purchase, exchange, lease or value of real real property in return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Back I.
I.
Child would I.
You know I.
Mr. Colter, all right, all right, adjournment. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, see you on the other side.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.